A forum being present. And I will note that this is a full and true forum for the town of Lakeville. This annual town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this annual town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on June 9, 2020. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws, and the warrant is posted by Constable Thomas Northcross on June 9, 2020. Before I continue, can everyone hear me? Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. The moderator and the town clerk have appointed the following panelists for this meeting. On the left side, we have Margaret Bethune. On the right, we have Joanne Upham. Center front, Bob Marshall. Center rear, Julie Taylor. All have been sworn by the town clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the town's general bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. The town of Lakeville lies on the volume of town meeting time as the standard conduct for Lakeville's town meetings. We will continue this precedent. There are two microphones positioned to the left and to the right. You must come to a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized, please state your name and address. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing and, after stating their motion, present it to the moderator. We generally do not limit how long you may speak, but please be comments brief and focused within the article's scope. I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving. We ask that speakers only approach the microphone if they have something new or pertinent to add to what has already been said. Please be respectful and do not make your comments personal. Shouting, booing, disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in an unacceptable way will be escorted out and may not return, not losing their vote. Don't lose your vote. By precedent, the maker of the motion will have the first opportunity to speak after the motion has been seconded. Following the motion maker's response, I will solicit the Finance Committee's recommendation and any other current committee's recommendation, such as the voting board. Then, any registered voter is welcome to speak to the article. When discussion is finished, we vote. If you have a point of order, you may stand and loudly state it in front of your seat. A point of order is a question. On a point of order, a voter may raise one or more of the following questions and no others. One, is the speaker entitled to the floor? Two, is what the speaker's saying irrelevant or contrary to the article being proposed? Is the conduct of the speaker of a court? And three, is the action being taken contrary to procedure or illegal? The moderator will immediately stop discussion, listen to the point of order, and move on it. Calling the question ends discussion or debate. Attempts to call the question before discussion as a tactical move to prevent debate will not be accepted by the moderator. If you would like to call the question, you must go to a microphone and only call the question. In other words, you may not discuss or speak on a motion and then call the question. When a motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up the orange voting card that you received when you checked in. Do not lose your voting card. It cannot be replaced. During voting, please keep your card raised until I ask you to lower it. If I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your card. However, if we need to have a counted vote, I will ask you to keep the card up and raise for counting. The use of the voting card ensures that only eligible voters are counted. For consistency, we will usually vote with the cards unless a voice vote is necessary. I'm going to try and keep the voice votes to a minimum. Your voting card has a yes and a no printed on it. This is in case we have to go to a ballot vote. You may not use it this way, but we have it just in case. A motion to reconsider can only be made by one who voted on the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if new information has come to light that might have caused members to otherwise vote differently. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many people have left. That's a parliamentary ploy and it will not be allowed. A motion to reconsider requires two-thirds and can only be made once. Upon a quit administration request that we drink only water in the gymnasium, please respect your space. We ask that cell phones be turned on silent mode. Lake Ham is recording this meeting and will make it available online at vimeolakeham.com. At this time, we traditionally recognize those members of the community who have served our town in public office, who have passed away since the last town meeting. Please stand and offer a moment of silence for the following. Judith Demora, Lakeville Police Department matron from 1986 to 2009. George Hoppy Hopkins, Lakeville Fire Department from 1976 to 1988. Janet Tracy, Town Clerk 2006 to 2014, burial agent 2006 to 2014. Wage and Personnel Board from 2006 to 2014. The Board of Registars 2000 to 2014. The Historical Commission from 2018 to 2020. And the Election Officer from 2015 to 2020. Sylvester Zickowitz, Middleborough Lakeville Herring Fishery Commission from 2010 to 2015. Planning Board 2011 to 2020. Water Advisory Committee from 2011 to 2015. Old County Regional Vocational Technical High School District Committee 2013 to 2018. Master Plan Implementation Committee 2014 to 2020. Gerald R. White, Finance Committee from 1986 to 1992. Board of Selectmen from 1993 to 2005. Director of Veterans Services from 1995 to 2005. Senior Center Supervisor Board from 1994 to 2002. MBTA Assessment Study Committee from 1994 to 1996. Joint Transportation Planning Group 1996 to 1997. Joint Committee for Planning Future Uses of Lakeville Hospital Properties 1997. Negotiating Committee for Lakeville Hospital from 1995 to 1998. Lakeville Hospital Reuse Committee from 1998 to 2002. The Water Study Board 2000. Lakeville Planning Committee from 2000 to 2002. Seaford Advisory Committee from 2001 to 2005. And Franklin Cobb, Special Police Officer from 1964 to 1966. A police officer from 1968 to 1990. Constable from 1979 to 1990. Surveyor of Wood, Bark, Lumber, Fence Viewers, and Field Drivers 1981 to 1989. And Special Reserve Police Officer from 1990 to 2004. Please remain standing to salute the flag. I would like to take a moment to thank our first responders and our town employees who have been working tremendously hard these last few months. We know that in addition to their official duties, many are juggling multiple responsibilities with home and family while also taking care of the people in this town. They have done this with grace and a positive attitude that deserves our gratitude. And many thanks to our residents for their help and support. Together, we show what a remarkable and special town Lakeville truly is. At this time, I would like to introduce the members of the town seated up in the front. We have Maureen Candito, Town Administrator. Brian Day, Board of Selectmen. Leah Fabian, Board of Selectmen. Richard McCamara, Board of Selectmen. Greg Corbo, Town Council. Lilian Drain, Town Clerk. George Bolopoulos, Finance Committee. Darren Beals, Finance Committee. Adam Lynch, Finance Committee. And Todd Hassett, Town Accountant. Does everyone require a copy of the warrant? Please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised, so I am assuming everybody has a copy. The following non-residents have either requested to speak or may be asked to speak tonight. If we say them as a group, then we can move them as a group. Todd Hassett, Town Accountant. Greg Corbo, Town Council. Franklin Lunez, DPW Director. Richard Madera, Superintendent of Schools. I need a motion and a second from a member of our community to permit them to speak. Second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Let me put them down. Any opposed, please raise your cards unanimously. Thank you. We have agreed, now that everyone has a copy of the warrant, I need a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Sorry, I heard two, so that would be a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Let me put them down. Any opposed? Thank you, that unanimously. We agree to waive the reading of the warrant and may now proceed to Article 1.
Article 1. I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds the following sums of money to pay unaided bills for the entire fiscal years. Bill 1, industrial protection fire with the amount of $150, funding source free cash. Bill 2, town fund amount $1,603, funding source free cash.
I need a second. Can you give a copy, Ted Carr? Mr. Day, would you like to speak to the article?
Would I? So, the first bill, industrial protection, which is a matter of emergency and was received on a normal time period. The second bill, town fund, was actually a building that was being closed, which is very disclaimant, so I highly appreciate that.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
I estimate, Dr. Plurble.
Floor is open for discussion. All those in favor, Article 1, please raise your cards. Lower them. All those opposed, this requires a forfeit scope, but the record shall wait past unanimously. Article 2.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds the following sums of money to pay unanticipated costs for fiscal year 2020 for various accounts in the general fund, including but not limited to the Park Enterprise and the Landfill Enterprise and further, to amend the budgets for said enterprise funds as shown on the chart as printed on page 6 of the warrant.
I need a second. Would you care to speak to it?
Yes, this was a project to put in the new fields down at the Tegwayland Camp, and they only appropriated $75,000, so they needed $1,660 to supplement the amount that was appropriated.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we wait for a vote. All those in favor of Article 2, please raise your cards. Lower them. Any opposed? This was a majority vote, and it passes.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds the following sums of money to pay unanticipated costs for fiscal year 2020 for various accounts in the general fund, including but not limited to the Park Enterprise and the Landfill Enterprise and further, to amend the budgets for said enterprise funds as shown on the chart as printed on page 6 of the warrant.
I need a second. Would you care to speak to it?
Yes, this is to, what we're doing here is trying to supplement some of the money that the Park Enterprise and the Landfill have lost due to being closed for COVID-19, so this is a 2020 adjustment. So, the Park Enterprise Fund is due to, it's $24,750. It's due to reduced estimated revenue, and that's coming from the Park's retained earnings. The second one is the Landfill Enterprise Fund, again, reduced estimated revenue, $35,000, and that's coming from Landfill retained earnings. And debt service short term for septic debt, which is $5,000, coming from septic loan fund.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Is there any discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Lower them. Opposed, please raise your cards. Unanimously passes.
Article 4, I move that the town vote to appropriate a sum of money for capital improvements and equipment and all costs incidental or related thereto, and to authorize town officials to take such action and execute all documents as may be necessary to effectuate the purpose of this vote, as shown on the chart printed on page 7 of the warrant.
Need a second?
Second.
Would you care to speak to it?
Yes. So, each year, we take money, mostly from free cash, but, and what we do is, that's how we buy our capital projects. I'll run through these, but it's, you know, bigger things, not everyday expenses. At the get-go, I'll tell everyone that we, due to COVID-19, we actually reduced what we had originally planned closer to the beginning of the year because we're trying to keep some money in what we call free cash, which is very, in the simplest terms, like our savings, that we have an extra. And that's in case we have an issue with the budget in 2021 going forward, where some of the funding from the state that we typically get won't come through, we'll be able to offset. So, right now, this is at a minimum what the Board of Selectmen feel as though the town needs, the town's needs are. So, for the Assessors Department, there's going to be a software upgrade on a mapping system, which is $30,000. That's coming from the overlay surplus. For the facilities, a security system, which is $23,000, which is coming from free cash. Under facilities, we have a peach barn that's out at Betty's Net, which is, needs some major repair work, so that's going to get a new roof, which is $15,000. That's also coming from free cash. For the town hall facilities, we desperately need a new generator, and this generator is also the generator that keeps our fire department going when we lose power, so it's definitely a must. That's $55,000. That's coming from free cash. Under facilities also is an air scrubber, $15,000. That's coming from a transfer from the highway oil tanks line item. For the police, we are looking to replace, I believe it's two cruisers, which is approximately $84,000, which is going to come from free cash. For the highway department, a one-ton truck with sander plow and all the other equipment that it comes with, $72,000. That's free cash. A pickup truck with a plow for the highway department, $43,000. That's coming also from free cash. A used street sweeper for the highway department, $150,000. $50,000 of that is coming from free cash, and $100,000 is coming from the overlay surplus. An irrigation system for the Parks Department, which is $15,000, which is coming from Park retained earnings, and the total is $502,000. Again, this is a reduction of what we were planning up until February and March when COVID-19 hit, and at that point, we said we're scrapping everything else temporarily.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Any discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Let me put them down. Opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes unanimously.
I move that the town vote to appropriate a sum of $235,000 of the purpose of constructing and equipment, a new highway department building, including the cost of security, design, construction, equipment, furniture, and all costs incidental related thereto, and authorize the town officials to take any action, execute all documents as may be necessary to effectuate the purpose of this vote, such sum of the transfer of available funds as follows. Transfer the sum of money, $114,000, on 4/23 and 5/7, from Article 1 of June 17, 2017, annual town meeting, Highway Modular Office. Transfer the sum of $70,000 from Article 26 of June 26, 2016, annual town meeting, Highway Office Trail with Ram. And transfer the sum of $50,576.50 from free cash.
Need a second? Would you care to speak to it?
Yeah, basically, what this is about, you know, is, in 2017, the town was going to try to purchase a modular office, you know, for the highway department, and they weren't able to get a bid that would meet that requirement. So then, they turned around and added another $70,000 in 2016, excuse me. So, it sounded like $20,000 and $70,000 for an office trail. And then, they added $114,000 in June of 2017. But, once again, when they went up to bid, they were way short of what the cost of the modular unit would be. So, now, what we decided to do is, instead of building a modular unit, what we're going to do is, we're going to build a stick building, which is going to cost about $235,000. And this way, there, this way, you know, we can total the cost by subtracting the foundations and the framing and so forth and so on, and then also, we can put a foundation underneath this unit, this program. So, this is very needed, and that's why we're adding $50,000 free cash, as previously said, the previous year, the money had not been appropriated.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article 6, Article 5, please raise your cards. Let me put them down. Opposed, please raise your cards. The article passes unanimously. Article 6.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of all the other offices, which will raise to appropriate $30 million, $397,000, $397,000, $250,000. And transfer $20,500 of Massachusetts Water Pollution Trust. And transfer $100,000 of free cash, or total appropriation of $30 million. $517,740 to defray town expenses fiscal period on July 1, 2020, to July 30, 2021, exclusive said sums to be allocated according to the handout entitled the Town of Lakeville Fiscal 2021 Budget.
I need a second. At this point, would you like me to read the list, or would you like to speak to the article first?
I'd like to speak to the article first.
Thank you.
You should have the module one that's called Fiscal 21, and the first sheet, it talks about projected revenue, state aid, and so forth. So, what I want to do is just spend a couple minutes, you know, going through this, so you can understand how we came up with the budget for Fiscal 21. When we started this budget process last December, meeting with the Finance Committee and the Selectmen, we were very conservative in what we were going to propose for the budget for Fiscal 21. So, revenue projections, basically, the first thing is a 2.5% increase, which is $590,000, which is a lot under proposition, 2.5%. Second one is new growth, which is $410,000. And that basically is new billings and things like that that have been added, you know, to the tax base. The overall reserve is monies that have been set aside for previous years that are being used this year for $130,000. The next item is local receipts. At Fiscal 20, which ends this week, on June 30, we, as a town, have been very fortunate that we have exceeded all of our receipts, you know, for the town for Fiscal 20. Those receipts would include, you know, excise tax, entrance receipts, fees, and permits. So, for Fiscal 21, we're increasing those estimates by $158,000. Now, the question is that, you know, all of a sudden, we had to take a different direction, you know, as far as the budget is concerned. State aid is going to be reduced. We have been told, you know, by the legislature in the state, that to expect either federal funding, what we did from last year, a 10% reduction, or a 20% reduction. So, we took the middle of the road, and we reduced our state aid by 10%. So, the reduction in state aid, a 10%, is $236,000. it would only be a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars, which is something that, uh, we can address. Um, as many of you who know about the capital expenditures, you know, we had one million dollars available funds to do capital projects, and we took a very conservative approach, and we almost spent five hundred thousand dollars. So, we maintained, uh, an additional five hundred thousand dollars in case we had other problems, as we certainly don't want, um, after layoffs staff and, uh, reduce, um, services. So the major increases that are in this budget, um, is, uh, free time, like the regional school, a five hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, um, which always seems like a big number, um, but it's, it's, it's not huge, I believe the increase is three percent of the number of the record. And the old online regional expenditures took is forty-four thousand dollars. Um, highway maintenance and staffing went up a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, we added one staff position because working, uh, with the, uh, park commission, um, the highway department has taken over. The maintenance, outside maintenance of all facilities that includes tech Williams dam, uh, joint oil, uh, and clear water. So we needed an additional staffing member, uh, to do that. Uh, we reduced, uh, the increase from the nice by fifty thousand dollars. Um, we increased pension, which is our allocation, uh, from Plymouth County, of a hundred three thousand dollars. And, uh, we provided two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for, uh, salary and, uh, with, uh, contract, union contracts, uh, settlements. So, what we did was, um, we reduced, we made some reductions, um, to offset the, uh, two hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, and we reduced the reserve fund by fifty thousand dollars. We had a treasurer's clerk position that was not filled and has not been filled, and we, and we took thirty-eight thousand dollars from that. We reduced the request, uh, this is not the budget, this is the request from the regional school district of a hundred sixty thousand dollars. And we reduced debt, debt expense has been, uh, reduced by a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. So, the bottom line is that overall, our budget increase for Fiscal Twenty-One is going up two point six two percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee Cameron. Right now, we'll read the, um, general fund budget, I'll try to do this as efficiently as possible. First, we'll start with compensation of elected officials. Board of selectmen, chair, four thousand nine hundred ninety-five. Second member, four thousand five hundred. Third member, four thousand five hundred. Board of assessors, chair, two thousand. Second member, one thousand five hundred. Third member, one thousand five hundred. Board of health, chair, two thousand. Second member, one thousand five hundred. Third member, one thousand five hundred. Treasurer, collector, salary, seven thou- seventy-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-nine. Longevity, five thousand four hundred and one. Town clerk salary, sixty-nine thousand five hundred and seven. Longevity, four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six. General government, selectman administration salaries, two thousand seven, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. Expenses, sixty-six thousand six hundred. Finance committee, expenses, four hundred. Reserve fund budget, one hundred and fifty thousand. Account of salaries, fifty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-two. Expenses, eighty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-five. Assessor salary, eighty-three thousand one hundred and forty-five. Expenses, one hundred and one thousand nine hundred. Treasurer collector, salaries, one hundred and eighty-one thousand ninety. Expenses, fifty-one thousand. Legal services, expenses, sixty thousand. Human resources and cable, salaries, one hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and five. Expenses, nineteen thousand five hundred and seventy-nine. Compensation reserve, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Information technology salaries, nine-seven thousand five hundred. Expenses, two hundred and sixty-one thousand. Town clerk, one hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-nine. Expenses, eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-five. Elections expenses, twenty-six thousand three hundred. Board of registrars, expenses, fourteen thousand six hundred. Conservation commission salaries, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty. Expenses, three thousand one hundred. Plan board expenses, three hundred. Appeals board expenses, one hundred and fifty. Historic townhouse expenses, six hundred and fifty. Town office, fire station expenses, one hundred and nine thousand three hundred. Town facility salaries, ninety-five thousand sixty-nine. Expenses, seventy-six thousand. Town report expenses, eight hundred. Cable TV advisory committee expenses, three thousand. Other general government expenses, eleven thousand and two. Police salaries, one million nine hundred and six thousand four hundred and two hundred and forty-seven. Expenses, two hundred and twenty thou- two hundred twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty. Fire and ambulance salaries, one million two hundred and sixty-four thousand and fourteen. Expenses, one hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five. Building inspection salaries, two hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven. Expenses, three thousand eight hundred. PT inspector salaries, seventy-two thousand eight hundred. Emergency management salaries, two thousand five hundred. Expenses, five thousand four hundred and eighty. Animal control, one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and ninety-six. And, for salaries, expenses, twenty thousand three hundred and fifty. Education, school committee stipends, this is line item forty-four. Six hun- six thousand five hundred. Operating assessment, fourteen million four hundred and seventy thousand six hundred. Transportation, four hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty. Non-excluded debt, one hundred and one thousand four hundred and fifty-five. Excluded debt, two hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred and seven. Old Colony Regional Health Tech, two million four thou- two million four thousand eight hundred and eighty-three. Bristol Agricultural, two hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred and seventy. Line item forty-eight, under public works, highway salaries, six hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-four. Expenses, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred. Snow and ice salaries, thirty-two thousand five hundred. Expenses, seventy-five thousand. Street lighting, twenty-five thousand. Cemetery, expenses, thirteen thousand. Line item fifty-four, for human services, board of health salaries, one hundred thousand three hundred and ninety-two. Expenses, ten thousand five hundred and fifty. DNA services, four thousand. Council on Aging, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven. Expenses, thirty thousand three hundred. Veteran salaries, eighteen thousand four hundred and one. Expenses, one hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. Line item sixty-one, under cultural and culture and recreation library, two hundred, for salaries, two hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine. Expenses, one hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-six. Historic library expenses, four thousand. Historical commission, five hundred. Debt service, line item sixty-five. Principal, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-two. Interest, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-six. Short-term interest, twenty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-six. Intergovernmental, line item number sixty-eight. Plymouth County Cooperative Extension, five hundred. Regional planning, two thousand thirty-six. Fixed costs, under line item seventy. Plymouth County Retirement, one million one hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-eight. Unemployment compensation, two, seven thousand four hundred. Group insurance, two million nineteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four. Line item seventy-three, risk management, two hundred and twenty-three thousand. Need to do the park enterprise budget as well? No, okay, okay. Almost there. Park enterprise, line item one, for salaries, ninety-six thousand five hundred. Expenses, one hundred, no, wait, is that it? One hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and fourteen. Do I get them? Articles. Oh, so I can stop? I'm sorry, you need to go through that. Yes. Okay. Is there any discussion?
Rodney Dixon, thirty-nine, Bigfoot, Lakeville. On the school increase of five hundred and, uh, something thousand dollars, how much of that salaries?
Mr. Lee Cameron?
Uh, FL Regional School, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, increase of that, how much of salaries?
That's worked that way, broken out my salaries, because you're looking at the total budget of the.
I do.
Okay, but five hundred and thirty-eight thousand in, uh, superintendent, see, or answer to my hand, but I don't think any of it is the salaries.
We did a confirmation of that?
See, uh, superintendent schools?
Yep. My question that, because a couple of town meetings ago, uh, I had a question about the increase of the school, which was substantial, and I'm just curious, why, why, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, thank you.
Madam moderator, thank you, there's superintendent schools. Um, as Mr. McMillan said, somewhat challenging, what I can tell you is that it is a two percent, um, contractual bargaining agreement with our, with our employees, and we have like four hundred employees within the organization. So it's not broken out as referenced by that five thirty-eight, but it's a two percent increase on top of what the previous year's one, we've been done as well.
Does that answer your question? Let me pause for a second. We have quite a few people standing in the vestibule and in, um, and we have an overflow area, so I want to make everybody aware, if you are standing, you may go into the cafeteria and get a seat there. Mr. Malidi has already been sworn in by the town clerk to serve as co-moderator should the situation arise. He is going in the back right now. Mrs. Drain is going to be getting someone to serve as a teller in that room. This does mean there will be a slight delay in our vote before we move to the next article, because I need to make sure that I have all the votes counted from the cafeteria as well. Just gonna give people a second to do that. Thank you for your patience. If you are standing, please go over to the cafeteria areas so you can be seated. Don't want to have people bunched up together. We do have one more chair here in the front. You want to sit up at the front? There's people in the front. Pass the time, I will ask the finance committee if they have a recommendation.
I have three requests.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion, we can go for, to a vote in this room. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. Ms. Drain, do we have a vote going in the other room? This is new territory. Did Mr. Malidi take a vote in the other room? Ladies and gentlemen, I request your patience. We need to vote for a short recess to make sure that we have everybody on line. I need a motion to do that. Need a second? All those in favor? Majority vote, thank you. Please stay seated. Okay, thank you, everyone. We may now resume, meetings now fall back to order. During the interim, it was brought to my attention that I misread about three things by several thousand dollars. I'd like to make it clear that we are passing the budget as written, not necessarily as it came out of my mouth. I don't want to go back and reread it again. I don't think you want me to do that anymore. So once again, we're going to take a vote now that we have everybody from the cafeteria in the room. Please, all those in, oh, yeah? Oh, is there one discussion? Though anyone in the cafeteria wish to participate in the discussion? Our town council recommends that we don't limit it just to people in the cafeteria. Does anyone have something to add to the conversation? No more discussion? Okay, we can go to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed? Motion unanimously, thank you. Onto Article 7. Mr. Day.
How we doing? How we doing now?
Good.
All right. Article 7, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000.
Go a little closer to you.
Return it to the lobby, please. Testing, 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 one, two, three. I will speak as loud as you would like me to. Thank you, sir. Article 7, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $213,814 from the Park Department Enterprise Fund as follows. $46,964 to be raised from Park Department obtained earnings. And $166,850 to be raised from estimated Park Department receipts. Said sums to be allocated between salaries and expenses of the Park Department for the fiscal period July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, inclusive as indicated in the finance committee report.
Would you like to speak to it?
I would, madam. So essentially, as you can expect, since the parks have been shut down for any and all events since March, their revenues have essentially dried up. So since we're not able to continue the revenue stream for the parks, this budget is a reflection of the continued struggles we've had with COVID-19 and trying to work within what we believe they will be able to start earning in the fall.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed, please raise your cards. Motion passes unanimously. Article 8.
Article 8. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $389,167 for the landfill enterprise as follows. $100,000 to be raised by taxation and $289,167 to be raised from estimated landfill receipts. Said sums to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the landfill for the fiscal period July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, inclusive as indicated in the finance committee report.
Would you like to speak to it?
I would, thank you. All right, so as you've probably seen through some of our review meetings a few months ago, the cost of recycling and trash disposal continues to rise and it's rising at a rate that the park fees and licenses can't sustain. So this year, the town will be supplementing the landfill enterprise with $100,000 appropriated for taxation. Fees, ticker prices went up recently by about 20% or so, but it was a moderate increase. There's obviously a fear that if we continue to increase fees at a rate that is going to get rid of the subsidy, we might start to see even additional dumping around town or even a shift to more private pickup, which obviously then does what? Drops the revenues to the landfill itself.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed? Please raise your cards. It passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now running up against our special town meeting. And so to do this properly, to follow proper procedure, we must actually vote to temporarily recess this meeting. I will then open the special town meeting and I will ask for a motion to recess that meeting until the business of the original meeting has concluded. I will then dissolve the first town meeting and resume the business of the special. I know that sounds a little confusing. All I need is a, a motion to re, oh, I have to, motion to temporarily recess this meeting. Any second. All in favor of a temporary recess of this meeting, raise your cards. Please lower them. Opposed? Thank you. Now I want to open the special town meeting. A warrant being present at the special town meeting will come to order. The warrant for the special town meeting was signed by the board of selectmen on June 9, 2020. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws and the warrant was posted by Constable Thomas Lordcross on June 9, 2020. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. We have the same tellers. We have Margaret Duthoon, Jolene Upham, Bob Marshall, and Geraldine Taylor serving. All have been sworn by the town clerk. The guidelines for this meeting remain the same. We'll lose town meeting time to guideline meeting. If you wish to speak, use approach from the microphones. For voting, you're going to be using the order of double court. Cell phones on silent, bars and others. People on the stage are the same. I do need a motion for non-residents to speak. And those people, Art. 11, asset, town account, or for vote, town council, Brandon believes, DPW direct, are all those in favor? Raise your cards. Thank you, you may lower them. Any opposed? Either with their grant permission to speak. Now I need a motion to recess the special town meeting temporarily so that we may return to the meeting business of the annual town meeting. All those in favor of a temporary recess of our special? You may lower them. Any opposed? Thank you. We are now going to resume the business of the first annual, our regular annual town meeting and we are on Article 9. Right, Article 9.
I, I move the town vote in accordance with the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District Agreement to appropriate a sum of $118,000, excuse me, $188,965 to pay the town's share of the cost of purchasing and installing infrastructure for Free Town Lakeville Regional School District, including but not limited to the purchase and installation of new wireless, local control, our cloud-based network, enterprise-class wireless network compatible with an HP Pro Bird Wide Network, a SIMA technology, and anything incidental related to the sudden transfer from Free Catch.
Would you care to speak to it?
Yeah, this has been requested by the regional school committee. They need to update their network infrastructure within the schools. This is certainly very important at this time, because as you know, a lot of remote learning is going on. The thing I want to point out is that the $188,000, 60% of it is going to be paid by the federal government.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 10.
I move the town vote to approve Article 10 and set forth a warrant specifying the part D to be raised by law and includes with the term of said part D.
Would you care to speak to the article, Mr. Lefaner?
Yes, I would. So this budget of $2.3 million is for last year of the Route 79 project. Here, warrant. Let's see, a few pages that talk about the project, the funding, and the table of many, now, warrant. Okay, this page is very, very pages, okay. So basically, the funding of this project was just approved by an hour override this past week at the town election. So what does this project do for us? Federal highway and state are paying for 100% of the construction, construction project of this project. If we don't do this, sorry, it changes. Sorry, you're back and then I'm going to talk about the issue of costs, excuse me. Basically, the issue of costs of Town Lakeville is the finishing of the design and the surveying services. Town has already spent $300,000, $350,000 in design services already. And the $2.3 million is for permanent easement acquisitions and temporary easements acquisition. And what that means is that during the construction, the temporary easements need to be taken and added to do the project and then the temporary easements uplifted. As far as 30 permanent easements totaling approximately 60,000 square feet, these are primarily having to do with the removing of the telephone poles and putting them back and you have to have easements that for where the wires go over somebody's property. These easements, the 60,000 square feet, will be, the property will be put back to where it was and of course you may have a telephone pole out in front along the road. There seemed to be a couple of, some confusion about six takings of property, which include 8,500 square feet of property, okay? So that's not a significant amount of property. And that property mostly is at the intersection of Route 18 and 79 and then some of it at Colonial Precinct Street and 79 and then some property that has belonged to the, the city of town. So for this process, we have to have appraising fees done for all these properties and all these easements and plus the legal fees associated with recording these temporary easements and per, uh, permanent easements and taking of the 8,500, uh, 8,500 square feet. So the cost, the total cost of the project is $12,825,000. The town has already paid $325,000 for initial design services. The total construction cost, 100% of the total construction cost, which includes redoing the complete road, sidewalks, drainage, and so forth, is, is, is paid for by the federal and state share of the project. And the town share of the project, as you said, is $2.3 million. So what's the cost per household? So if you have, if you own a $200,000 house, it's $22.18 a year for 15 years for a total of $332.70. Your home is valued at $400,000. It's $44.36 a year for 15 years for a total of $616.40 for a 15-year period. So what happens if we don't do this project? If we don't do this project and we decide that we're going to do it on our own, which would not include sidewalks, okay, at all, the cost of the project would be roughly five to six million dollars with no reimbursement from the state. So we could decide that we want to support $2.3 million or it's going to cost us $5.6 million, you know, to do this project. And if we don't approve this this evening, then as of June 30th, we will, we will lose the $10.2 million in grant money.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Yes, ma'am, finance committee recommends approval.
Now open your discussion.
Madam Moderator? Yes? I'm like the Leah Glavian, 30 South Kingman Street, also a selectman. Sorry, I just hooked my mask onto my ear. A little bit of history behind this is, um, this, a lot of folks, especially on social media, have said, you know, why do we keep bringing this up? Why do we keep bringing this up? Well, out of all the selectmen here right now, I'm one of the, I'm the only one that was a selectman last year at town meeting. We've had a big change in the board. When we brought this question to the town meeting last year, we had two questions. One question was on the $2.3 million to do the Route 79 project. And the second question was additional money to work on other roads in town. Now, we do have plenty of roads that need work. As a selectman, I can't believe how much money that costs to, to do all this kind of roadwork, but, you know, I don't set the price. We just have to find a way to pay for these things. So at town meeting, the two questions, both of them passed. And I, I was happy about that because I figured, okay, we'll get Route 79 done and then we'll have some additional money. But I think folks liked the choice that they had. They could vote for one or, and/or the other. At some point over the summer, and I'm not really going to get into a lot of history, like I said, the board has changed significantly. I never decided in any way, shape, or form to combine those questions and to make it one ballot question, but that's what happened. So I didn't necessarily think that was fair to the folks who really wanted to get Route 79 done. So that was another reason why I was in favor of bringing this up again. I wanted to present the same question at town meeting that was on the ballot. So I, I really feel like by combining both, because the cost went from $2 million to $4 million and $4 million is double everything selectman and the camera just said. So a lot of folks wanted this roadwork done last year, but they became a little, you know, unhappy with the way that the selectmen went about it. They felt as though it was two questions at town meeting. It should have been two questions on the ballot and it wasn't. So it's not that, you know, we're, to us as selectmen, kind of looking at the future of town, the road is sort of okay now. You know, our highway superintendent, he can give us all kinds of information, all kinds of numbers on how much money is spent every year repairing it and everything else. But the problem isn't today, the problem is down the road, you know? Are we going to have $5 million down the road to do the same exact work? So while I understand that, again, we're asking folks, you know, to vote, to So while I understand that, again, we're asking folks, you know, to vote to increase your taxes again, I just want you to know that as far as I'm concerned, I feel like this is a better process. We presented it on the ballot as one question, that's exactly what we're getting here today. We didn't, it's not like, and that's what I wanted. I wanted people to have a fair shake, you know, not two questions turned into one. So that wasn't fair because some folks might have wanted to vote for just the Route 79 money. And then others may have wanted the additional funding, but that's not the way we presented it. So I feel as though we have made, made the decision a little bit more, I wouldn't use the word fair, but exactly what we said at the ballot box, we're saying here today. It's not like last year where we presented it in two different ways. So I just want everyone to know that as one of the selectmen, the only selectman that was here last year, I feel like this process has been far more transparent. And I hope everyone can see that, you know, this board here is trying to do things in a very transparent, um, in a transparent way. So if anyone has questions, we do our best to, to answer.
Thank you. Any discussion, please approach the microphone.
I'm 39 Baker Lane, but I stand before you as the chairman of the master plan implementation committee. And I solicited in the open forum last year to, I'm not a proponent of increasing taxes, but I can tell you that our committee's been working many, many years on the master plan. The master plan, uh, the original was 2005. We just completed it, rolled it out, it was, it is awesome. We held many events for the public and each time without exception, people came and mentioned Route 79. So people want this done. We've heard it time and time again. Again, not even having to, raising taxes, I would say now's the time. People want it, but if people vote against it, we understand it. Eventually it will have to get done, but it's gonna cost at least two times, if not more, than what is on the table right now. So I'd just have to reconsideration. Thank you.
Yes ma'am. How do you count on Lois playing Route 79 my whole life? Yes, 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 yes. Thank you.
Mr. Day? Yes.
Uh, Dennis, I have a question. How accurate are these numbers? In other words, the town share of 2.3. In my experience, if that 2.3, that makes it 3.5 or 4.6. If the taxes keep on running up, how accurate are those numbers?
Mr. Camera?
I think, I, I think the, uh, the number is, uh, extremely conservative and I think that it won't be a problem, you know, asking for any more money. I certainly went on the back and asked the taxpayers for any more money for this project.
Would anyone else care to add to the discussion?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Day.
That was very loud, I'm sorry about scaring you. Uh, Brian Day in Elders Pond Drive, uh, also a recent selectman and speaking to you. Uh, really as a citizen, it's literally a week ago that we had the election for our Gothos Division, so I would have been right there with you at the mic and not had things not gone this way. I've been no, you know, not bashful, but I think the financials of this makes sense. I look at it strictly from that point of view. Uh, the highway department is already spending a significant number of their yearly budget on fixing a very small portion of this road. And we're watching every winter when the plows start going by, Facebook lights up, fix these potholes, fix these potholes and break in rims and such. And we keeping up the money into it and the fix is just downstairs. You know, I'm really, if I break these numbers down even more, as Chairman the Camera said, if you have a 400,000 dollar home, the estimates with state funding are roughly 44 dollars and 36 cents per year. If I break it down further, it comes down to about 3 dollars and 68 cents a month. Am I willing to accept that, maybe skip one and a half trips dunking donuts or so? Probably, because I'm really afraid that if we don't do this now, we lose this opportunity. It's gonna be your kids, your grandkids that are sitting right here trying to vote on it again. And now the construction cost has gone from 5 to 6 million, right back to 12 or 15 million. It's gonna be an even bigger hit. Insurance rates are very low right now. Uh, I don't know, you know, every few years we hear, they're historic lows. Maybe they'll keep going lower, but we've never seen what they are right now. So it's kind of a, an opportune time. We also have, if you speak to the treasurer collector, there's a number, and in the budgets as well, there's a number of long-term debt that over the next couple of fiscal years is actually rolling off the books. You're gonna start to see some projects like the senior center and the libraries and others actually paid off. And by the time this actually can start to break ground, which I believe is still in another two or so years, I'm homing to that, I think that's what earlier estimates have been, before that's gonna even start to roll towards us. Uh, so if I was sitting up there with you right now, um, I think it's kind of obvious where my vote would be. And I certainly don't wanna see taxes go up like any of you, it affects all of our budgets. People that are butters on this road are gonna have to deal with construction and nobody wants to put up with that for a year and a half. But I'm willing to, you know, fork out a couple of dollars a month now versus, you know, potentially the estimates would be given at 5 to 6 million number, that's anywhere from 215 to 260% higher. So I'm kind of of the mind that I prefer the devil I know. Right now, this is the one I know the best and I'm afraid of what's gonna happen if we don't move forward. So I'll, I'll leave you that, thank you for letting me speak so long.
Thank you. Yes ma'am.
What about for your team, Sandy Surfield? While we're discussing this, is there any way to cut back on the truck traffic or at least, uh, cut down on this limit? Because the trucks are flying by all the time.
So that is a separate issue out of this article, but it's certainly something that could be brought to the selectmen during here. They have, um, open hours to talk to them. So what I, I would recommend that you meet with the selectmen.
Parkman Hoffsby from 17 Johnson Drive, I live just off of Route 79. And I have not familiar with the project, but I'm very concerned about the traffic. If we approve this project, is the traffic on 79 going to be increased with the tra- uh, traffic club? And basically, we're crazy. Our question is, if I can.
Mr. Camera, would you care to speak to that?
I can't, I can't answer that question. I know there's been traffic studies that have been done by the state, but to say here that the track traffic is gonna increase or decrease, oh, I can't answer that question. I don't have any idea.
Is the road being widened and flattened?
The road actually already has a 40-foot width. Now, it's a town, the town layout is 40 feet. So the sign mark, you know, fits into that layout. They are going straighten out the road in certain areas to try to improve the, the site and so forth and so on. But, uh, I, I would, I would not say that tried better. I mean, that's a main road, you know, through Lakeville. Um, what I would say is that with the new T-station listed in the meanwhile, there'd be significant amount of reduction of people coming down 79 because they will get in on the train and then, and that, and it's all over at three times a time. So they're anticipating that five of the cars will go down that road, uh, less than they.
Which would be offset by a new development. In any case, is the wa- road gonna be much wider?
Through, through the model, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah. Um, is the road going to be wider than it is now?
Um, they will lose the, the land of the road as best they can. The, uh, the, the width of the road itself, um, I have that just on here.
Over on the, um, far side, we have some pictures.
Franklin? Oh, here, thank you. The, uh, the width of the road, uh, will be 24 feet, uh, with, uh, two shoulders, uh, five feet each. So that would be, uh, that'd be, the width, the whole width including the shoulders would be, uh, 34 feet.
It's 34 now?
I mean.
Is it 44 now?
It's 40 feet right now. Hey, the, the road layout is 40 feet wide, it's not helping utilize that now. Hello?
Any further discussion? Any question?
Hey, you know, Mark Sylvia for Molten Street. Um, does this road have a warranty basically? Or when does the city have to start paying for potholes?
I don't know what the warranty is. Uh, usually these roads last for 25 years. Um, I, I don't know what, what the, uh, whoever does the job, what kind of warranty they're being on throughout the year.
Okay.
I mean, it's supposed to last 25 years, at least 25.
I've seen it where they have road construction and two years later we're fixing potholes.
Yeah, um, Franklin, are you here, highway and DPD director? I think he's around there somewhere.
Yes.
There he is. He, he already has a process down that side of here.
I guess, I guess the most simple way to answer that question is there is no warranty. Um, with proper maintenance, if he's probably within five, 10 years, you'd be practicing it. Um, 10, 15 years possibly in surface treatment, um, continuously after that. Put money into the road to keep it in the road, but regardless of what we do to stop it.
Thank you.
Don't go too far.
Franklin?
Along, along those lines right now, as far as maintaining the road goes and what would be future maintenance, currently, what would it cost us to continue to maintain this road? To keep it a passable road for the future without doing any improvements? If we do not pass this tonight, that we have to continue to patch this road, how much would that cost us as opposed to having a great new road? That you will have to maintain eventually?
Uh, again, that's a tough number just to come up with. It kind of depends on how rough of winter we have. Obviously, this last winter we were fortunate. Um, we put probably.
Would you please speak a little louder?
We put, uh, $100,000, I would say, in this patching in the last two years. Um, that's not counting the overtime coming in for potholes during winter. Um, whenever there's a, a laundry event, again, everything opens up, there's no way around it. Um, people may blame you on, uh, you know, shoddy work, but the fact of the matter is the road has its base, has no drainage. No matter what we keep doing, this street ending town will eventually come off.
Thank you, here's myself, Brock, always want Johnson Drive. Um, I'm a pretty big proponent of this project. Um, I know that there's a lot of people opposed to this project as well. And they do have some valid concerns as far as the widening and sidewalks and is, does it fit the character of the town? Now, having looked at the plans, having studied the plans, knowing where the sidewalk is coming through, what I maintain right now as my property, knowing that I'm gonna lose about 10 feet of tree line along one section of that, knowing that it's going to come in over where I currently mow my lawn, which is actually the town's lawn, but I still maintain it, yeah. To me, it really is in the brayer. We either take this right now and we spend 2.3 million dollars, with the state being responsible for the bulk, if not all of any cost overruns that might come up during construction. Or we say, forget it, we don't want the sidewalk, we don't want the bike line, bike lanes, despite the fact that we've got a number, a large increase in the number of people biking out there right now and walking. And we put this off and that road continues to fail. Let me continue to spend 50, 50,000 dollars a year at least to keep patching potholes and to keep it safe with no drainage to speak of. Now, if you've ever gone down Johnson Drive, you know, bad rainstorm after bad snowstorm and it thought you're going through a lake, because there is no drainage there. It's horrendous. You go down further down the street and it just washes out. Uh, both, both ends, down by 18 and you go down, down further past La Barrera down that hill and it's just constantly just washing out and washing out. And that will not get fixed by matching a pothole. And we really need this. I know it's a tough pill to swallow for a lot of people. I know it is. But sometimes, you just gotta do it. It really comes down to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison Sylvia for Molten Street. I mean, I'd be unpopular opinion right now after that. I think a very compelling point, but you know what? Half the roads in our town flood while we drive them. Right now, let's face it, times are different. We've all been under lock and key in our homes for months. Our children, there are gonna be unforeseen costs this year with the school. I'm sure they are going to have to come back and ask for something more internet usage, computers for these kids, so that people who can't afford internet in their homes are going to need money to pay for these things so our children can get educated. We all know we need a new fire station. That'll be coming at us soon and they deserve it. Those people work hard. I can attest to it myself as a homeowner who had their home burned down. I mean, there are going to be a lot of costs. I know I'm not gonna be popular right now, but there are gonna be so many unforeseen costs after COVID that the town is going to need. That right now is not the time to be spending this kind of money. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Joseph Lovey, 11 Colling Drive. Um, we're asking the taxpayers to strike a check for 2.3 million dollars. And, um, my question to the selectmen is, if this passes, I know that the state, based on prior conversation, this is the camera, that, um, it was up to the state to project manage this whole thing. My question is, as if we do strike a check for 2.3 million dollars, is there somebody from Lakeville going to kind of keep an eye on the project that is being conducted by the state? And if not, may I recommend doing so because it is our money? Thank you.
Would you care to speak to that?
Sure. Uh, this 2, this 2.3 million dollars is all gonna be managed by the town as we have to have legal services, we have to have appraisals, and we hire those friends ourselves to do this work. As far as the design services are concerned, it's done by the architectural company, which is, we're doing beta, um, beta engineering, I believe. Um, and they have done all the initial engineering. And they provide a project manager as well for this project. State provides their own project manager for the construction of this project.
For answering that question, I think it's important that we have some line of sight, especially for our perspective, to what we will.
Thank you, Mr. Camera. Yes, Mr. Camera?
And, uh, gentlemen, if you get the gentleman just spoke, he said that, um, any overruns, the state pays all overruns unless we ask for a change in the project, project. Right now, they have a 10% contingency above the 10 million dollars that they're already, they're already funding. And one other point that I wanna make, that I think is the most dangerous intersection in town is the corner of Route 18 and 79. And that whole intersection is gonna be completely redesigned, redesigned and widened and so forth. I'm sure we've all gone through that intersection with fear in our life that we're gonna get hit. So that's really important, you know, for this project. And the other thing is the precinct street and Route 79. If you're coming up Precinct Street and you're going through. If you're coming up Precinct Street and you're going through, some of us can't turn our heads to see the cars coming down 79. So that's all going to be changed, you know, as well.
Thank you. This requires a two-thirds vote. Tellers, would you please stand so that we can count this vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards and keep them on. Mr. Marshall, will you be responsible for counting these individuals?
I got them.
You did count them, you did? Okay.
Uh, the gentleman on the end though, I didn't have to.
No, he did, he's not, he cannot. 39, thank you. You may lower your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Tellers, please count. The motion passes. So we have 18 no's. And 131 yeses. So it's two thirds. My two thirds stopped. So now we can end our business of this meeting. And we have four items on the annual town meeting. I need a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting, please. Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We now move on to the special town meeting. All right. I need a, um, does everyone have a copy of the warrant for the special town meeting? If you do not, please raise your hand and we'll get you one. Okay? All right, I need a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Do you want to hear the second? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Can you put them down? Any opposed? Passes for the homeowner needing to read the warrant. Onto Article One.
I move to, uh, vote to authorize the board of selectmen to petition the general court for special legislation to change the position of treasurer collector from elected position to appointed position by the board of selectmen. The law, however, the general court may make, may make clerical or editorial changes upon owing to the bill unless the board of selectmen proves amendments in the bill before enacting by the general court, which are within the scope of the general objectives by this petition. The petition would be to take the form set forth in this warrant.
Need a second? Would you care to speak to it, Mr. Fleming?
Yes. The treasurer's collector's position today is quite different than it was 25 to 30 years ago. The expertise, you know, that's required, you know, to be a treasurer collector, um, is very, uh, very important. Uh, in the last, I would say, 35 years, we had two treasurers and collectors. And the current treasurer collector is planning to retire in the very near future. Now, almost 85, 85%, of all treasurers collectors are now appointed throughout the state. And, um, in this general area of all the towns that are surrounding us, there's only one town that still has an elected treasurer and collector. And that's the town of Lakeville and that's the town of the whole of. I know this was presented to the town a couple of years ago by the previous board of selectmen. This big difference between what we're proposing and what was proposed then. What was proposed back then was that the, um, selectmen proposed that would be terminated, the existing treasurer collector that existed today, the chance to be dead can. What we're proposing here is that the existing treasurer collector can stay in her position until she retires or till she resigns. And then after that, you know, the board of selectmen will go through an interview process, an extensive interview process, um, to hire a qualified treasurer collector. That person could be somebody in town, that could be somebody outside of town. So that's the reasonable answer we presented tonight. Thank you.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Is it approval? Is there any discussion?
It's a 39, I just got a question about appointing versus election. Uh, just for clarification, Lakeville does not have recall, is that correct? Okay, so that's kind of a problem. So if anyone of you or any elected officials don't do their job, is there a way to recall?
That's right.
Okay. So to that end, is that in part what's driving this? And two, so part two is, is it due to the complexity of the job? Like you said, are there licenses, are there trainings, what's required?
Okay, to the complexity of the job, I think what I would do is ask that, if getting a current treasurer to say a few words. I'm sorry, I should be doing that.
That's okay, I will allow it.
No, I'm calling it. My goodness, I'm calling it.
I am dedicated to collecting, treasurer collector, certified treasurer collector. The job is very difficult, very complex. It's, uh, come a long way in the past 26 years that I've been in the treasurer tax collector's office. I was also on the planning, the E-Board of the Plymouth County Treasurer and Collectors. And I see that it evolved into all basically appointed treasurer and collectors. Lakeville's growing so fast. And we need someone that can come in to our pains and bring us, bring us to, you know, a higher level than what we're at right now. And I'm just too tired to open my mouth to some stuff. I just want, I want us to be, we're great already, but we need to do this for the town. Find something that's got great municipal experience, certification, bring him in. You can do it locally, we have great people within the building. We just want to find the best person for the job. That means appointing time, that people's, you know, still want to collect, I guess. You know, some people have that and, but that's not the way that it's been going in our state, so. And I trust this board and they're not trying to boot me out. And they, you know, I trust the board to do the right thing for the town, but, but, thank you.
Mr. Day?
Uh, I'll see Mr. Fleming, please give me a second.
Okay, Mr. Day, may I speak first?
All right, thank you, Mr. Fleming. Um, in, in combination with Mr. Dixon's, uh, point of there being no recall in Lakeville, one thing that was actually something I learned to, and please keep me correct if I'm misstating anything here, those that know better, is that apparently the elected position, you could actually show up for work one day per year for the elected term and still get paid and be considered doing your job at the letter of the law. Please somebody immediately say something, like something, something wrong there, uh, which I thought was kind of interesting in combination with the no recall. That is by no means, um, any sort of negative statement towards our, our current treasurer collector. I think he's been doing a great job and I think it's amazing that he's tenured and done what it is. Thank you. Uh, but I did, whoop, you got an adjustment there, where's it going? All right. Uh, so I just thought that was a really interesting thing, just of a fact that maybe many of us didn't even realize as you kind of consider, um, everything here. You know, in, in my position on the board, I, I would hope that, you know, if this does pass, depending on your field, uh, we would hopefully look to make a, you know, a good committee, put together different people to, we would look at candidates that perhaps were considered in the future. So I would, I would definitely deliberate amongst my colleagues here about what that possibility can be.
Mr. Fleming?
Joseph Fleming, 11 Colling Drive. If this passes tonight, I ask that the new board really focus on transparency. Leah had mentioned on improving transparency. People may or may not know, I did run against a candidate for treasurer collector in April of 2019. It was a positive experience. If it passes, I ask that there is transparency and that, that there's a joint, uh, collaboration when reviewing, interviewing and considering candidates, whether it's in town or another town or some other outsourcing entity. I ask this because what I would like to see is not only that, but an actual printed detailed job description, itemizing what the job is, what the minimum requirements to do the job, such as years of experience, whether public or private, as well as any educational requirements, bachelor's, master's, degree, grade. Um, so I ask that the board, how that process works, I ask that that be done and posted and documented. If it does not pass, um, I believe that Lakeville has a lot of talent in this community and I think it would be a successful election as well. And with that being said, regardless if it is passed as an appointed or an elected position, I will be putting my hat back into, um, the treasurer collector run as I have 17 years of permanent experience in a master's management. I ran for selectmen recently. I am passionate about Lakeville and financing my expertise as well. Thank you.
Mark Knox, 87 Pierce Ave, uh, through you as moderator to the selectmen. With this decision, I'm sure you've done some research and you know that there's only two elected tax collectors locally. What's the cost difference going to be to the town to hire a qualified person compared to the elected position you have now?
Mr. Fleming? Would I just accept?
Okay. The salary that currently our current treasurer is making is very competitive in the marketplace in relationship to other treasurers, collectors, uh, in other towns.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Can I ask the finance committee? Edit, okay. This requires a majority, oh, I'm sorry.
I am, I'm William McGarrett, 5th Central Ave. And I understand we're proposing to replace a very successful, uh, town treasurer and elected position who cannot be recalled with a highly trained professional who will be hired and by the, uh, the board of selectmen and also subject to review and dismissal by the board of selectmen. So I guess my question is, um, what in the function of the treasurer is more amenable to an elected position answerable to the voters instead of to the board of selectmen? And what sort of got me thinking on this was, uh, Article Three, which we're going to look at later, which states that the, well, the tax collector will be creating a list of people to, well, you know what it says, to, um, revoke licenses, but that the tax collector can also intervene in the hearings. And that got me thinking about whether, what the purpose of the intervention was and whether that person is advocating for, uh, town citizens or providing that for testicle or that kind of thing. Uh, I understand that most towns in the state have gone from the elected position to the appointed professional position and I just wondered if you could speak to support that.
Anyone on the board care to answer that?
First of all, we're not, we're not replacing the current treasurer collector. She's staying as, as long as she wants until she resigns or retires.
I understand that, thank you.
So, um, I guess that I would ask the moderator to ask the, of course, the treasurer to answer the question about the, uh, the fees and, and is, yeah.
Will they come to the microphone, please?
Is this the bylaw that we can?
I'm sorry, are we asking about the fees, which is another article? Are you asking what makes this position different?
There's a different article, I think, that is your current.
Correct. I want to, you started off by, by mentioning what, what the selectmen, what the difference between an appointed. We're talking about the fees, that's enough.
Nothing to do with, I'm sorry, nothing to do with fees. I'm wondering why an appointed position is more, is preferable to an elected position.
Correct. That, you could say something.
I think the appointed position will be doing the same job as the elected position as far as fees and, and licensing and tax, and tax collection.
Yes, Mr. Fleming?
Um, the difference between appointed and elected is the elected person has to live in town, okay? The appointed position means that person can come from somewhere else. And so when you're, uh, looking for new tax collector, treasurer and collector, you get a bigger pool of people that you can interview and make sure that they have the proper qualifications and make sure that we have a job description that fits the treasurer and the collector and what the responsibilities are and so forth. Currently, the town, the town treasurer and collector does not have a job description because she's an elected person. So that will all change as far as trying to make sure that we get the right qualified person with all the certification. You know, one of the things that treasurer hasn't pointed out is that we do a lot of banking and borrowing and, and working, you know, with the different institutions and making sure that we have the proper cash flow in town that is being managed properly and so forth and so on. So it's, uh, quite involved, you know, that that person needs the right qualifications.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Okay, this does require a majority vote. All those in favor of Article One, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Opposed, please raise your cards. You may lower them. The motion passes. Article Two.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 57, and adopt the general bylaw as set forth in the warrant, which would permit the licensing authority to deny an application to revoke or suspend any local license or permit, including renewals and transfers issued by any board, officer, department for any person, corporation, or business enterprise who has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, amendments, or any other municipal charges.
I need a second. Mr. Gray, would you care to speak to it? Ms. Fabian, would you care to speak to it?
Um, so this is, um, not really a housekeeping item, but the state's standard has changed. I believe it used to be people were, or corporations, whatever, the licenses were given twelve months by which they could be in arrears before, um, we could deny them a permit. Um, this changes it to, and maybe town council can help me here, fourteen days, isn't that what it is?
Council, may I speak?
Hello? Hi, good evening, uh, thank you for your matter, moderator. So, um, the prior version of the law was that the tax collector would furnish this list once a year, um, and so if somebody, um, fell into arrears during the course of the year and then applied for a license or permit, there would be no way to deny that license or permit based on not paying the taxes. The change in the law now allows the, the treasurer collector to provide this list on a rolling basis. Um, and so anytime someone applies for a license or permit, um, that applicant can be checked against the list kept by the treasurer collector, and that license or permit can be denied if they are not paying the taxes or fees owed to the town. Uh, so what it does is it provides another, um, avenue of collection for the town because someone who wants to obtain a license or permit is now going to have an additional incentive to pay the taxes or fees that are owed.
Um, it does not apply, however, to common vicarious licenses and alcohol, is that correct? I don't want to...
Ms. Fleming?
I agree with moderator, I, I believe it does apply to...
It does?
Yes, and alcohol. Um, there, there are certain licenses and permits it does not apply to. Um, open burning, bicycle permits, um, sales of articles for charitable purposes, children's work permits, um, clubs, associations, um, dispensing food or beverages, dog licenses, hunting and fishing licenses, marriage licenses, um, and theatrical events, public exhibition permits.
Okay. Anyways, council asked us, you know, reminded us that this is a change that we also needed to make, so, um, I, I guess if we have any other questions through the moderator, we can ask town council.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, Article Two, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed, please raise your cards. You may lower them. The motion passes. Article Three.
I move...
Mr. Day, the microphone is open.
No, I'm trying. It's, it's a strata area, alright. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section Eight Dot Seven, temporary licenses, to change the licensing authority for mobile homes and storage boxes from the board of selectmen to the building commissioner and to make the changes shown in the warrant.
I need a second. Mr. Day, would you care to speak to this?
Hey, I want to make that, alright, there we go. So, uh, if you feel like this is groundhog day, it is. So the last time that we voted on this, it turns out that there was, uh, one word that we got wrong. So if you notice, I think it's on page four, five in your warrant towards the top. A single word, "board" has been struck and it is being replaced with "building commissioner." So essentially, what it might have been was rocks and clerical, ministerial error. Uh, I believe it was the attorney general's office that reviewed this and said, no, the, uh, the implications of that specific word aren't large enough to require this article to be voted on again.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Does the planning board have a recommendation?
Planning board recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. We're to this. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed, please raise your cards. I see no cards. The motion passes unanimously. Article Four.
Parker Meokowski, planning board. Planning board, uh, makes a motion to, well, I move that the town vote to amend the, um, town's zoning bylaw and zoning map with respect to the regulation of marijuana uses as shown in the warrant.
Would you care to speak to it?
The main purpose for doing, uh, this overlay or this, uh, to limit the areas where marijuana businesses can go is that there's many locations throughout town which are currently zoned industrial and unbeknownst to neighbors and communities, those are areas where under current existing law, uh, marijuana facilities can go in. So we felt that it was appropriate both from a traffic and management standpoint to limit that development to the industrial parks located at the, um, sort of where the industrial park is off of Eighteen, many people know where Talbot's is over there, and then Millennium Circle, which is off of Route Forty-four.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Does the planning board have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? This also requires a two-thirds vote. We can risk it again, and we're saucy. All those in favor of Article Four, please raise your... You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no cards. The motion passes unanimously. Article Five.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Setucket Trail as a town way as clear to fore laid out by the board of selectmen and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain and easement in or fee simple title to the way and any related easements, all as shown on the road layout plan entitled Street Acceptance Plan, Setucket Trail in Lakeville, Mass., dated December twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, drawn by Allen and Major Associates Incorporated, on file with the town clerk.
I need a second. Ms. Fabian, would you care to speak to it?
Um, yes. So this was scheduled to be voted on at last year's annual town meeting. However, um, right at the last minute, some of the paperwork, um, wasn't, um, prepared in time for that, so there was no action taken on this, I believe, at last year's town meeting. So at this point here, um, we, um, our superintendent of streets has looked at it and he has, he has, he can speak for himself if he wants, but he, um, has indicated that there's no, um, nothing that would be troubling to him if the town were to accept the road. But this is just, um, acceptance of a road, which means the town now goes forward and takes care of that road.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Thank you. And I understand Mr. Moniz recommends approval as well? Yes? Thank you. Is there any discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes. We come to the end of our business. Mr. LeCamer would like to say a quick word.
Here we are. Um, first of all, uh, we'd like to thank everybody that came out. We did not expect a crowd of this size, uh, we prepared for a hundred and twenty. We had the overflow there in the cafeteria, which we had a problem with. But, um, the logistics of putting this all together is, was huge. Uh, and I'd like to thank the town moderator, you know, who put this all together and laid this all out here in the gymnasium, and of course our town clerk, you know, as well, our town administrator, and, uh, Lake Cam, you know. Lake Cam, you know, had to put all of this together with cameras and, and everything, and, believe me, it was mighty easy.
And I would like to thank the studio staff of Aponekrid High School. They were absolutely phenomenal. I need a motion to dissolve the meeting. Second? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Be safe.